We will call to order the Hannover Borough Finance and Personnel Committee meeting for April 16th. First, we will start with a public comment. Mr. Holt, please.
Thanks, Chairman, and Robert Holt from the Third Board. On your agenda tonight, it shows that you're gonna vote on beginning the permitting process for gasification plant. And I would suggest to you, you're not ready for that vote yet because you have not asked some of the hard questions. You talked a lot about how much money you're gonna get, one point some million dollars, and this and that and the other, and the environmental benefits, and how- We're gonna get ninety percent of the feedstock from sewage treatment plants from other communities, and only ten percent will come from our community. But you've glossed over the hard questions, and the first role of government is to protect the citizens, to protect the people, and that involves asking hard questions. And you've not asked the hard questions about the long-term environmental risks. And there are some. And they don't know what are the long-term impacts of the material that's gonna get produced and then shipped away and spread around. And it's under one roof, so no, it's never gonna get wet. But trucks are coming in and coming out, and you can't guarantee that there isn't gonna be some spillage because this stuff does leach over the long period of time. And there's no absolute guarantee that it will not get in the soil and it will not get in the water. So you're not ready because you haven't asked the hard questions. And I mean, on paper, it looks good. I think Mr. Hagberg's a sincere man. His company has worked on these things. His company will work on this project. But you need to ask the hard questions about this, and you're not ready for that vote. And then on forty-four Frederick Street, I'm gonna urge you again not to do what you did in the bidding process for the thirty-three Frederick Street project, which was tell the bidders how much you were willing to spend on the project, the renovation project, before you awarded the bids. So I would ask you not to do that. And let them take their best educated guesses. Don't tip your hand. Don't tip the taxpayers' money in their favor.
Yes? Mr. Holt, just to address one thing you said. Mr. Hagberg, his company has nothing to do with this project, so-
He's accused himself-
Right, out of an abundance of caution.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, second public comment. Mr. Riston?
Hi, my name is Isaac Riston. I live in the Fifth Ward. I wanted to talk of two things. First, of six point oh nine, for approved continuation of change order policy. If people are not aware, because this is the agenda items, like one we read, on the Borough website, there is a whole packet that goes in each of these items in depth. One thing that I was not aware of was how many sign-offs are needed for a change order policy to be done, especially ones that come before council. So it's always nice to see why a change order is done, or at least who has to approve said change order before it comes to council. Second item was on seven point oh two, Earth Care Solutions. After last week's meeting on gasification, I reached out to the Environmental Resources Energy Committee of the State House and talked to a couple people from the majority on the gasification project. I do wanna thank the Borough, Borough staff, and community media for recording that meeting so they would share the meeting with them. They were not only pleasantly surprised by how much effort was going into it, but also was able to connect me with the local governance majority committee as well. One thing they are will be concerned about is that in Pennsylvania, there is no gasification standards across the state. So that was one worry they had. But one thing I think is really important about tonight is that if you are to vote on this, either for or against, it's important for the community to know, are there any other times that this project, the plug can be pulled or it can be stopped? I think that's important overall. But not only am I happy to hear, not only to get feedback from the state about this and to make sure that T's and I's are being dotted, but to have that for me is welcoming. So thank you for recording the meeting to allow more public transparency and allowing me to talk to more government officials to hear about what's going on here to Borough governments. One thing I would note real quickly as well is that when you're talking about a House bill, a bipartisanship, just make sure that it has more people from the committee with leadership. The House bill was talked about last time with the gasification meeting. It's not a bill that I would say is bipartisan support right now, though it could in the future. Currently, it is not. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask for help from community media since I don't see a TV.
No participation tonight?
All right, thank you. All right, we're gonna move into four point oh one on the agenda, which is interview for citizens who have submitted interest forms for the Civil Service Commission. Amy, sorry. Could you escort them over, except leave Mr., leave Ray here, please? That's where I got stuck, sorry. Is Raymond here? I don't think Ray is here.
Is Ray here? I think that was Ray that just lied.
Looked like Ray left.
I'm trying. Ray, if you would please step up to the mic there, sir. And we're gonna have some council members ask you a few questions.
Okay.
And then we're good from there. So Councilman Ricart?
Yeah, Ray, if you could briefly summarize what you think the role of our Civil Service Commission is, and then tell us why you wanna be part of it.
Yeah, I think, you know, ultimately, it's a leadership role. It's understanding and listening to the community, making decisions that are in the best interest of not only the Borough, but the people as well, and yeah, giving back.
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Rupp, could you please work one, too?
Sure. On the Civil Service Commission, you have to make a lot of decisions. Can you share with us when you maybe ran a decision where you disagreed with the rule of regulation or had strong support from somebody else asking you to disregard the rule and vote with the crowd?
Say it one more time, and are they sure I understand it clearly?
That's okay.
Sure, I can say it again.
Sure.
Describe your ability or your experiences rendering a decision where you disagreed with a rule or regulation or had strong support from others asking you not, asking you to disregard the rule. Somebody's asked you to disregard the rule, and you're not crazy about the rule, but you know it's a rule. So do you have any experiences like that?
Yeah, let me think back to-
You could basically be the Lone Ranger. Have you ever had any-
Sure, yeah. I would say, you know, there's examples in business every day, so I work for Campbell's, right? And I would tell you that, you know, I have many examples of things that we agree upon as a group that we don't always agree upon as individuals, right? And ultimately, I think it's what's important, and I'll give you an example, is to make sure that you listen, that you understand everyone's opinion.
And understand everyone's feedback, have an open mind. And ultimately, you may not, you may not make that decision individually, but as a group, you would lean in the direction of the-
Of the better good. And I would say, you know, I would use the example of, you know, many times through our plants, building of our plants or reorganizations, those types of things, where we've made decisions that maybe I wouldn't have necessarily made as an individual, but as a group, I agreed upon it. Does that make sense?
Good job, thank you.
Okay. Councilman Greenhold, could you ask number three, please?
That kinda segues into my question. Tell us about an experience you have had collaborating and/or working with a group.
Yeah, so I do that every single day. So I would say, you know, I meet, I lead a large team with Campbell's. So we meet as a group on a weekly basis. We make, we make decisions as a group on how we're going to budget, how we're going to spend, how we're going to make business decisions that are best for the company, best for our brands. And so, yeah, I do that on a daily basis and a weekly basis.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hagberg, four, please.
What else would you like us to know about you that makes you a strong candidate for the Civil Service Commission?
Yeah, I would say, you know, I have a lot of, I have a lot of experience over the years, thirty-three years in the business industry, right? And a lot of years in leadership, you know, thirty of those years probably in leadership. I would, ultimately, for me, this is an opportunity to give back to the community, right? And share some of what I've learned, be able to utilize the skill set that I've built to be able to help the community.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have any questions for us?
I don't.
Okay. Thank you. You can sit and watch the next one.
We should.
Sean, if you could, please step up to the- Oh, Sean. Okay, next time in English. All right, Sean, we're gonna obviously start with a few questions. Mr. Ricart?
Sean, good to see you.
Good to see you.
If you could briefly summarize your understanding of the role of the Civil Service Commission and how you might be a part of it.
I'd like to be a part of. I've been involved in civil service for probably about the past thirty-seven years in the fire department. And I understand what they do as personnel matter related, which coming out of my retirement, I'm in retirement now, and I dealt a lot with personnel matters down at the airport between hiring, training, qualification standards and everything for everybody that worked at the airport. And also worked with the police department, too. Did a lot of different things there.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Rupp?
Okay, this is a long question. Are you ready? Describe your ability of rendering a decision where you disagree with a rule or regulation, and you had strong support from others asking you to disregard the rule and just do what other people want.
I'll do whatever the regulation state. I just went through that for the last twenty-something years, dealing with the FAA with regulation state. We're gonna have to do it, and that's what I'm gonna stick with.
Good answer. Thank you.
Yep.
Mrs. Greenhold?
Tell us about an experience you have had collaborating and/or working with a group.
I'll do a, annually, we held a recertification training for the Secret Service at the airport where they had somebody act as a president, come off a training plane. And I coordinated that with the FBI and the Secret Service. And we did a lot of collaboration getting our fire department guys. We had to run calls, but we were involved in their training. And also getting those guys in, and they were bringing blanks into the station, had to get stuff cleared there and let everybody know, and had to let all the news agencies know and all the people involved at the airport property. And we all took our, put our hands in the pot and took care of that.
Thank you. Mr. Hagberg?
What else would you like us to know about you that makes you a strong candidate for the Civil Service Commission?
I just, generally, I wanna help out the community and serve. I've been involved, like I said, with the fire department for thirty-seven years, career twenty, twenty-something of it till they retired me medically. But I just enjoy everything I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Klunk, thank you very much. You have any questions for us?
No.
Okay. Amy, is there anyone else here? This is a tough decision. Okay, moving on to four point zero two. I'll be looking for a recommendation to fill the terms. One for a term and one for the alternate. We'll do the full term first. So you're making the nomination, and you're second in it?
Well, I'm making a nomination, too. But I'll let him go first. He kinda spoke out of turn.
Okay, we're currently talking about the one for the appointment, not for the alternate.
Okay.
Okay? You're nominating Sean, Mr. Klunk? Okay? And you're second in it?
I'll second it.
Oh, don't need to, okay.
I'll make that easier for you.
Do we vote on this now?
Are there any other nominations?
Are there any other nominations for this position?
I could nominate, is this for the term?
For the term, yes, ma'am.
I nominate Ray. Name it.
I'll second.
Well, you don't have to second, but that's my fault.
You don't need it?
Nope, that was my fault.
Okay.
Okay, so we have two nominations, so we go in order for that. Okay, so this is for the term, not for the alternate. We will start with Sean, and I will call the vote, please. All those in favor of Sean, signify by saying aye.
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 Might need hands. Did you get that? Were your hand up or no?
I don't get to vote.
Not you.
Not you.
Sean, yes.
You're going for Sean, so there's five then.
Okay. Moving on to the next. Yes.
I've got five. Ed, Bill, Scott, Tim, and Brian voted for the nomination of Sean Klunk. That's correct.
So, and there's ten, council, so that-
Technically, I have to see if he gets five, the second candidate, before you deal with it.
Okay.
Robert rules.
There's a tie-breaking.
Little bomb.
We're gonna dispense with tie-breaking until we get to the final.
Okay, so you want me to call for the next gentleman? Okay, all those in favor of Ray, please signify by saying aye.
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 I might need hands quick, again.
Your hand up or down, Brian?
Where's the mayor?
So they have five again.
Will you finish, she vote yes, I'll win once. I don't know if you all-
No, no, it's the mayor.
Should be five.
You can, you can vote.
Vote twice.
Yeah. If you, if you voted for the first nominee, you can vote for the second one.
Because you're voting for each position, so they're really not the same.
So what he's saying is that if you voted, like as an example, I voted for Sean on the first one, I could have also voted for Ray on the second one.
Right, because there are two separate votes essentially on two separate candidates in two separate positions.
Does everyone understand that?
Got it.
Okay.
Do you wanna re-
So we're going for position, correct, like the, or the term?
This is for the term, yes, sir.
Excuse me, we call for a revote if they didn't understand that they could vote for-
I don't think it's gonna change.
Okay.
So what do we do?
Wouldn't the most votes get the first, the full term, and the second get the-
It's five and five.
There's not enough votes to carry-
Well, just to save this a little bit, I didn't vote really on the second one because I've only, I voted for the first one. Now, I clearly understood, but we kinda paused here. So yes, I will give you an eye on the, on Raymond as well. I like both guys.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm just gonna say that right now.
I agree. So you want me to recall the vote for Raymond? Yeah. Okay, so if everybody's following your program, we are still looking for the term, and we are gonna call a revote for Raymond. So all those in favor of Raymond, put your hand up, please. Says Raymond, sorry, Ray.
Raymond's good.
So Scott now voted for him.
We got two guys. They're both in. You got six.
Okay. Congratulations. We appreciate it.
To who?
To Ray. Basic math. Okay, so we will move on to four point two B.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Sean Klunk for the five-year term as alternate member on the Civil Service Commission.
Outstanding. We don't, we don't need a second, but thank you for that second.
Well, if you needed one, you got one. My ear is up, so I'm speaking a little louder.
Okay. So, that being said, I'd like to call the vote for the alternate term for the Civil Service Commission for Mr. Klunk. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Klunk. Klunk? Thought you said funk. No. Okay, moving on to five in the agenda. It's gonna be a presentation and discussion from Mr. Shelton. Five point oh one, which is the bridge bank financing for public safety building. The floor is yours, sir.
Oh, thank you. All right, you should have received just a one-pager in your packet this evening. So we have two things that are coming up. One is a bridge financing for the public safety building. As you know, we took out a long-term bond for seven and a half million dollars. That's for a combination for both the buildings. But we're gonna take out a four-million-dollar short-term bank loan for the second part of the financing. The reason, the reason is for that is that it's gonna be less costly to the Borough, so, you know, we anticipate that we'd have the loan only out for a few years until we received our RACP reimbursement as opposed to paying interest expense for twenty, thirty years on another bond. So that's, that's, that's the reason that we're going for the bank loan. Our finance advisor, PFM, that helps us with our long-term financing, will provide a detailed presentation to the council in July with hopes that we would seek approval from the council to move forward with the security of bank loan in the month of August.
Okay.
Any questions on that? Pretty straightforward. The second is-
Any idea on interest rates or anything?
I do not.
Not yet.
I do not. Municipalities get a better rate than a lot of entities and individuals, so I couldn't tell you exactly what it is. I do know that we have to stay under five million dollars in the bank loan to get a preferred rate. Second is our debt refinancing. So one of the things that we, PFM, again, our advisor, helps us to do is to look out for opportunities to refinance any of our existing debt. So our two thousand and twenty ACND general obligation bonds are all callable in the, in the year of two thousand and twenty-five. So the call provision allows us to refinance the debt at a lower interest rate without extending the bond maturity. So we're not really kicking the can down the road. We're actually saving on the interest expense. And it-
For clarification, what does callable mean?
Callable means you can either call it back to pay it off, or you can refinance it. It's just like refinancing your mortgage, essentially, if you wanna compare it to something.
Jim, that depends on the interest rate.
Correct. And it's, the ACND bonds are actually, some of them are three, some of them are four percent. A lot of our previous bonds are in the two percent range, so even if they become callable, we probably wouldn't refinance those. So it really depends on what the interest rates do. So it's not a guarantee we're going to refinance all these series of debts. But if there's an opportunity to do that, because the total amount of interest expense through year two thousand and forty-five, which is the longest term of these, some of these bonds, is about six million dollars in interest expense. So if there's an opportunity to save us hundreds of thousands of dollars of expense, interest expenses, it's obviously a good idea. Our financing advisor, PFM, will be again here in July to talk about the refinancing of the bonds in July, and then we'll be seeking approval to actually do the refinancing in August, or whenever it really occurs, because it could be anytime this year. That's it.
Any other questions for Jim?
Thank you.
Nope, thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, I'll be looking for a motion.
Make a motion.
Settle.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
At six point oh five. That bond reduction. Now, I'm just curious, because I'm not used to this sort of thing, but that's a lot of reduction. Does that mean that if something happens now, that they're only liable for twenty-five thousand dollars?
Hold on. Mr. Maynes, if you would speak to that real quick, or, there you go. That'll work, Phil.
Well, two of them, you've got two of them, Carol.
Oh.
Get two of us.
Chad, will you introduce yourself?
Chad Arnold, I'm with Borough Hannover. I run the, I'm director of utility operations.
Can you answer her question?
Yeah, so in your question, the bond reduction is, we did a field survey of what remaining work is left at the development area, and we feel that it's any about twenty-five thousand dollars worth of work left to be completed. So he's asking to have his bond reduced to that amount, so that's what we, that's what we did. We put, we took the time and effort for our staff to go out. If it's not finished, we feel it'll be, with labor and materials, it'd be twenty-five thousand dollars left to do.
Okay, well, that was my concern, that you, you went out there, because that's quite a reduction.
Correct. We did do a field survey of it.
What was the previous amount we were holding?
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on that one? Okay. Any other questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, then I'll call the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Maynes, where are you going? Okay, moving on to seven point zero one on the agenda. Approved resolutions for submission of PA Small Water and Sewer Program grant application.
All right, just a quick introduction. I'm Tony Thomas, your Director of Water and Wastewater Resource, Treatment. Been with the Borough for thirty-six years, so I should be a familiar face. This is a grant, as you know, we're always looking for grant opportunities. This is a grant for small water and sewer for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to help offset some of the capital costs that we have coming up. Mostly at the water treatment plant, but there are some opportunities at the wastewater treatment plant also. So it's a fifteen percent match. So the Borough is gonna be, we'll be on the hook for about forty-four thousand dollars, seven hundred and some dollars and some change. So if there's any questions, I'd be glad to field them, like, you know, what it's for. There was a memo I sent out to you about some of the pumps and stuff we're replacing, are looking to replace, so-
It's pretty cut and dry.
It's pretty straightforward, yes.
I thought maybe-
Sure.
-a question. I'm assuming, I mean, we just rebuilt the place-
Yep.
-ten-ish years ago.
Yep.
So I'm assuming whatever we're doing here is driven by savings in utilities or whatever that's consumed.
Some of it is. Some of the newer motors will be more energy efficient, but we've had a couple problems with a couple pumps and some swing check valves that I think are design flaws. And the reason that is is because we, we were limited to the amount of space we had to put those pumps in.
Okay.
So some of the piping isn't ideal for what it's supposed to be, because we're pumping from the water plant the whole way to parcel reservoir and the towers. It's a long, it's a long run.
It's a lot of friction.
It's a whole lot of friction, yes. So this will be like a more robust valve. Obviously, it's a four-hundred horsepower motor, so they're quite expensive. And, you know, they're not readily available, so-
Would we put in intermediate pumps? I'm not a water guy, but I don't-
No, but we do have backups. But this, part of this, part of this is going to be, we wanna ensure that we do have those backups in case we have a problem where one would go down.
So they run essentially parallel, not in series?
Yes, they run parallel. But we rotate them to keep the hours even on them, but we always wanna have that backup. So-
So the return on investment here is reliability, not necessarily financial?
Yes. Yes, if you wanna call it reliability, peace of mind.
Or reliability, when you get a-
That's right.
Well, this is on, this is on drinking water, though, not sewer water.
Yes, yes. Well, sewer's just as important, too.
Well, no, I get it. I get it.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Scott, all, important to note that we would need to do this with or without the grant. So we're getting the grant money to do something that we would have to do.
Right.
Okay, so this is, this is more of a, of a maintenance replacement.
As Margie said, this is going to be, we're going to, we're going to, this is going to be a planned capital expense going forward, so we're eventually going to have to do this.
Right. All right. So we're able to make capital investment with grant money that was necessary.
Let's take advantage of that grant, use some money, yes, absolutely.
So we're going to do a match of forty-four thousand.
Fifteen percent, fifteen percent match, about-
Thirty-seven thousand, five hundred.
So it's, it's somewhere around ninety thousand.
Thirty-seven thousand, five hundred.
Thirty thousand, five hundred?
Thirty-seven thousand, five hundred.
Thirty-seven, okay.
Fifteen percent of two hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, so-
That's what I needed.
I would be looking for a motion to-
So motion.
Okay, great. And a second, great. Okay, all those in favor are moving that to next week?
Aye.
Saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Well done, thank you.
Okay, seven point zero two, Earth Care Solutions LLC authorized council president signature on the Form EGP for Stormwater Authority to move forward with necessary permitting for gasification project.
I would make a motion to approve this.
Can I, can I have a moment to make some clarifications on this, so people understand?
Sure.
Because it can be confusing.
We'll explain it while people are here.
I appreciate Robert Holt and Isaac's comments. I appreciate their research. The key is, there is no short of five different departments in DEP that were not contacted. Air, solid waste, biosolids, environmental, so there's a whole slew of folks. The other thing I want to point out is, this may seem like this is new, it's not. We're actually not in the beginning of it. You got City of Westchester has it, City of Ephrata, or, you know, Ephrata has it, Bethel Plant, Dairy Township. There's a number of others that I, I don't even know off the top of my head, they're already doing this or in the process of permitting a facility. It has been permitted by DEP, by those different departments. This form does not lock us in, in anything. Both parties can walk away at any time. And quite honestly, Earth Care has the most money already in it, so if it's not going to go anywhere, they're going to walk beforehand. This letter just essentially says that the council is willing to open up conversation with the regulatory agencies to answer those questions that Mr. Holt is bringing up. The air quality department will be involved, the solid waste will be involved, those questions will be asked by those before they give a permit. If it's not, they're not going to issue a permit. But you can't start conversation with the regulatory agencies until you have standing, or Earth Care has standing, to be able to begin those conversations. So this is not locking anybody in, this is not like, well, this is a done deal. We're just at the beginning of this process, because permitting can quite, takes quite some time.
And there's no money committed by us.
There's no money committed by us.
I think that's the, the concern that I got, speaking with some of the council members.
At that meeting, Chuck, also.
Wait a minute, let, let him-
Order of the time.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. When I was at the meeting, they said that this is not going in haste, we are taking our time, and it could go anywhere from four to five years, really. And there's somebody asked about-
I wouldn't expect it to take four to five years, but if, keep in mind the amount of money that's being invested, they're not going to go fast.
Right.
I mean, it's too much risk.
The gentleman looked back at me and said, yeah, he said this could take four to five years.
Getting through the state.
Right, to make sure and everything goes-
No business wants to take that long, but the state can make it take that long.
Well, he said it to me, so, and then there was a gentleman that stood up and said, what are the negatives? Okay, and I, I think those will all be addressed within that spacing of time, as we get together for the meetings.
Correct, and at the same time, like I said, there's already four, if not more, maybe five, and others in planning throughout the state of Pennsylvania already. So we're not, we're not the first to the rodeo.
No, I asked him how many jobs he had done here in the states, and he said five.
Yes, yeah.
Right?
Eleven to twelve elsewhere.
Okay, thank you.
My question ultimately is basically in the same line. So I just wanted to make sure we're not committed, but we're not going to understand anything more about it until we move a little bit forward.
One hundred percent correct.
That's what I needed to know.
Yes, councilman.
We've got to put some numbers to it.
Now, before we even, can even do this, don't you have to get some kind of confirmation from Conawago Township? I heard when I was listening to that meeting, they haven't said anything that they were even willing to let us do it.
If there's a, if you look online, Carol, there's a video of the Conawago Supervisors' meeting, which is very informative, and they go through this entire discussion, and they're-
I just listened to the whole meeting of hours.
Yeah, but this was, I don't know, a month-ish ago.
Okay, so we, so we're okay with them? I mean, to either-
Yeah, let me just clarify, without going too far down the rabbit hole, we have been in contact with Conawago since the beginning.
Right, and Eric was there, did a good job.
I go to their board meetings on occasion to bring them updates. I think the video that's being referenced was one of those meetings that we went there to present. I know that did come up at the public information hearing that we weren't talking to them, which was not a true statement. We very much were.
Yep. Dr. Rob?
I would just concur with what Isaac said, but people in the public, that gasification project is, is a pretty good thing, it's a good deal for us, for the borough, and your wallet. So you might want to take a look at that. Is that on our website?
It is.
It's a, I don't know what it's called, what's it called?
It's under the Stormwater-
It's under Stormwater Authority, and it's up at the top of the page.
Really pretty interesting.
Both are there, Barb, both the, our meeting and the Conawago meeting, because I watched the Conawago one this afternoon.
So is everybody clear that this does not, just by authorizing the beginning to discuss with DEP, the concept of the project, both parties are still able to divorce and walk away?
Thank you, Mr. Hugland.
And we did have good show from both Conawago and the Hanover area, the borough itself, the, at our meeting.
Yeah.
So, you know, some of them said they didn't know they found it in the newspaper, however, and through the Facebook or whatever.
Website.
Which is great, okay, but they showed up, and I'm sure that they have time to think about it at our next meeting. I know that many things will be addressed that we haven't even thought of yet.
But it was a lot of clarification, it was really good.
Very much so. Okay, I have a motion on the floor, and I believe we have a second.
Yes.
I'll second if you need one.
I'm going to call the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One abstain.
And is opposed.
Okay, and one abstention. Motion carries. Okay, moving on to Planning Commission, eight point zero one. Approves ordering ordinance amendment. Authorized Borough Solicitor and the Department of Planning and Engineering to proceed with the schedule of legal advertisements and public hearings. Pretty self-explanatory. Any questions before I call the roll? Okay, looking for a motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Doesn't sound like it. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Eight point zero two, approved revolution, resolution for preliminary and final land development plans, unconditional approval for Schu Orthopedics, it was in our packet.
No.
Pretty self-explanatory.
I'm going to so motion on that one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion for Mr. Maynes? Pretty self-explanatory. Okay, I'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks for walking up.
That's another good addition to our tax base.
Okay. Number nine, my favorite thing, nine point zero one. Change order for 33 Frederick Street, Public Administration for Project. Change order number forty-five, and the amount of $891 for additional solid surface counter in the community kitchen.
Thinking, Mr. Prave?
Second, please.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just real quick to mention that that one is actually coming from partnership dollars, that's not coming from the actual project fund, so this is part of our work with the community aid, so this one's a little different than other change orders, but important to note.
Just as a point of reference slash clarity on the project for 33, with change orders, pluses and minuses, I believe we're at about parity.
I could tell you that right now.
All right.
Sorry, Mr. Maynes, for taking your stage.
Please.
We were at 1.9% with the final percentages, which was, on a $3.1 million job, it was $59,000, and most of that money was recouped by corporate sponsors.
Very good.
So, corporate sponsors, so I'll give you an example, I think we had how many, how much percentage in the 3.1 million?
Uh, built into the job?
Yeah.
We had built an estimated 10%, which was fairly-
And we were at 1.9. So once again, I'm going to go on record to say that, by the time the change orders got to me, trust me, they've already answered all the questions that I would have had.
Right.
They did, they did an outstanding job with that, on that project.
Okay, so basically, we're at parity.
Right.
Correct. Thank you.
Okay, so, do we have a motion? I'm sorry. Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nine point zero two, this is pretty self-explanatory, we're actually working in the building.
Yeah, so just for council's education, because you're going to run into this again with the forty-three project, or the forty-four project, when you get to the near finish line of a project, there's a technical term called substantial completion, and it's very important in the contractual world, because what it means is that the project has been completed, there are certainly still multiple punch lists floating around on the project there that need to be addressed by the contractor, but for all operational purposes, the building is complete, we're able to take residents in there, we're able to do our function, and so it's a very important part now that council acknowledges that we have hit that proverbial substantial completion, because what that does is trigger certain retainages to be held by us, to make sure these items get done, and it certainly allows the contractor then to get other monies that are due to him back.
Okay, my question would be, at this point, we're going to pay them whatever amount it is, what amount of cash are we still holding?
$187,000.
Okay, and our feelings are quantifiably that there's less than $187,000 worth of stuff-
Absolutely.
-that needs to be on the punch list, so it's to their financial advantage.
Mr. Rollins, just to give you an idea, I walked on the past two punch list things, and we are down to the nitty and the gritty.
I know, I, I was there, so, yesterday or the day before, but I just want to make sure, you always want to be holding, as you well know.
We're holding more than what the-
More cash than, than it's worth.
Yeah, we're down to drywall repairs, paint, flooring issues and things, mechanicals, all that is fine. It's all up, it's running, it's operational, we're fine tuning, but we're past all of the big dollar.
So long as we're holding more money-
Yep, we are.
-that's always where you want to be, right?
Yep.
Eric, on the warranty, when does that click in?
After this. Warranty starts at the completion of the project.
Complete, completion, okay.
And it's what, a thousand years?
No dangling lines.
What's this?
No dangling strings.
No.
It's the final completion.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll be looking for a motion, please?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'd add, I think it's a well-done project, Tim, Margie, Eric, and company.
Yep.
For what it's worth.
Thank you. Nine point zero three, fire civil service rules and regulations, pretty self-explanatory. I'd be looking for a motion.
Motion.
Second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Motion carries. How am I doing? I'm trying.
It's too long.
We will move on to the second part of public comment. Nobody has anything? You don't have anything on here?
Don't you want to go through management reports?
I'm, I'm asking that question now.
I just have an update on the Pavilion at Bear Avenue.
Okay.
We, we are now in possession of $4,500, toward that $20,000 to construct the Pavilion at Bear Avenue.
And that person you want to send, thank Matthew, thank you.
Forty-five hundred.
That was great.
Okay. Any other management reports?
No, sir.
Correspondence was in our packet. Moving on to the second public comment. Mr. Holt, please.
Apologies to Mr. Hegberg for any misunderstanding. It is more than a passing interest.
I didn't use the term passing interest. I don't put words in my mouth.
All right.
At ease.
So I filed a right-to-know act request, I filed several, because it seems sometimes that's the only way you can get information, there seems to be a willful desire of staff, for people not to have all the information, to not understand things clearly, and it would be nice sometimes to hear some of the hard questions asked about the building project as asked and discussed in the finance committee meeting. Hasn't happened, but in January, this council had two consent agenda votes, and you didn't know what you voted for. And that was, you voted to expand the list of employees who can drive vehicles home, borough vehicles home, from two to seven, and some of them seemed natural, the police chief, things like that, but this list was just expanded from two to seven, and there was no questions about how much it was going to cost, what's the mileage, what's, who's, what's the cost of the wear and tear on the vehicle? Nobody asked any questions about what was going to be the cost of this. And so I asked, and I asked, I wanted to know, who's paying for the cost, who's paying for the gasoline and the wear and tear maintenance on the vehicles? Is it the employee going to be paying for that? Or is the borough taxpayers going to pay for all that expenses of seven vehicles for employees, many of whom don't live in the borough? They don't even live close. It's not like it's a five-minute drive. And I got this response that says, well, that's a question, that's not a request for a record, we, we're not going to tell you that. And as far as the mileage and the, the cost of those vehicles being driven home by employees, well, we don't have those records. So you don't know what you voted for, and it just seems like a little bit lackadaisical about what's it going to cost the taxpayers at a time when people are worrying about their jobs, and worrying about the cost of living, and I'm just like, you don't know, it's a classic case, you didn't ask the hard questions that I've been talking about, and the taxpayers are going to pay, and I just think it, it was just a perk, a fringe, that you gave the employees, and there was no question about, was it really necessary, and that you gave the employees, and there was no question about, was it really necessary, and could you afford to do it? And I'm going to turn to one more thing. I went to a Recreation and Parks Committee meeting, and I was appalled that Recreation and Parks Director Matt Perkins discussed the fact that one of the elections, one of the candidates in the election in the first ward, it was the first words out of his mouth. Well, you know this guy, he's running for election in the first ward council seat. And, and I'm like, why is this relevant to anything? And, and then he's talking about, well, this guy is posting all kinds of good stuff about the reservoir projects, with all the development you're going to do on the reservoir property, and how it was good information, and it was reliable. And, and I was just like, where is this discussion going, and why is this happening? And why is a Borough official using the imprimatur of his office, of his position as, as a Borough Director of Department, talking about this? It's, and it shouldn't be happening. And then more questions about why couldn't the Borough post this own, this information on their own websites? Why did they have to rely on a political candidate to post this information in his related, in sites related to his campaign? And I, I just, I can't get a good answer. However, there's, it raises the question that Borough employees are coordinating information with this candidate's campaign. I don't think he even really truly understands what's happening. But it's not right, and Borough employees should be told that they shouldn't be using their official capacity to endorse any candidates. And they should not be using Borough time and Borough resources to help candidates in their election campaigns. That's a fundamental thing. And I'm, I'm still trying to find out what the heck is happening. And I'm, I'm learning a few things about the process to file a complaint. It's lengthy, it's complex, and it's expensive. But I'm, I'm thinking about it. And I'll get, but you should tell your employees, particularly employees who don't even live in the Borough, they're not even taxpayers or citizens, that they should be not coordinating in official capacity with election candidates, in any capacity.
Thank you, Mr. Holt.
Thank you for your patience.
Jim?
Yes.
One question. I don't understand, and I think we all want an answer. Yeah, we have an increase in employees that are driving Borough vehicles. Is he entitled, I guess I asked.
This is probably a question you're going to have to ask Margie.
Well, I don't know, Margie or our Solicitor, is he allowed to have that information? Or, if I would ask you for it as a councilperson, would you give it to me? And would anybody out there in the audience be able to get that information? I don't know. Why is it considered off the table? I'm just curious. Feed me information here.
Right, so my, my recollection of the, the Right to Know Request that Mr. Holt filed was for, was for information that we don't have a record on. So under the Right to Know Act, you only get what the Borough has a record of. It's not a, it's not a method to ask the Borough questions about things.
About what?
About things. So if you want records, you, you file a Right to Know Request. We supply the records. We don't explain the records. That's not how the Right to Know Act works. So if you have questions of council, there's plenty of opportunities to ask those questions and get answers.
Okay.
That may not be in record form. So, you know, Mr. Holt is free to ask those questions in another format.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
Anyone online? Okay. One quick announcement I'd like to make, please, is that on April 23rd at 5:00 p.m., directly across the street, if you're from Hanover, the old McCory's Building, we're going to have the ribbon cutting for 33 Frederick Street. We love to see people come out and take a look at what, what we did over there. Moving on to 15 on the agenda.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Motion carries.